And you are rolling and streaming live.
Great. It is 3:00 PM. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council Special Meeting, Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 3:00 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order Number N2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Public participation may be obtained through the Morro Bay City website and/or linking into the Zoom link and/or using the telephone Zoom link, which at the appropriate time the clerk will display. With that, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember McPherson?
I am here.
And we are heading.
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I will call the meeting to order. I will now go ahead and open public comment. This is public comment for items only on the agenda, today's agenda. And Zeke, I will ask if there's anybody available for public comment. And the, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, the instructions for accessing public comment are now displayed on the screen. So I'll open up public comment.
Yes, sir. We have the first caller. And caller, you are online.
Thank you, Council. This is Sean Green.
Welcome, Sean.
Hi, guys. At the back of the Staff Report for Recommended Appropriations, there's a list of six expenditures that I just want to make a quick note on each one because they are all high-dollar amounts. And I know, I think CFAC didn't have a chance to chime in on these. So number one, $70,000 for repaving the police parking lot. If anyone's looked at the parking annex there, it looks like it's in pretty darn good shape to the layperson. And we have a pretty significant infrastructure issues that we need to address likely before that one, including Coleman Beach in particular. Coleman Beach parking, I'm sorry, bathroom has been closed for over a year, and it's an essential park restroom right at the heart of the Embarcadero. Number two, $34,000 rent discount to waterfront leaseholders. I appreciate that the Council is looking out for our business community, especially during this time of COVID. And I'm not opposed to the 74, I'm sorry, the $34,000 rent discount for the coming year. But when you speak of suspending the consumer price indexing of their, of waterfront leaseholders, we need to make sure that we return to this, the current schedule in 2022, otherwise we risk losing essentially $34,000 a year or more based on that lack of compound interest on that discount for one year. Okay? Item number three, $50,000 in renovations to the aquarium building. I tried to reach out to Christine Johnson of the Central Coast Aquarium to find out an update. Hopefully, you guys can give us an update. It seems somewhat misguided to drop $50,000 to renovate a building that's intended to be torn down in the near future for the aquarium project. So unless there's some update that we don't have that you have, it seems like we should be holding off on that renovation or using it for an in-house department like tourism or the Chamber. Then we have $52,000 to fill the police vacancy. Seems to make sense if they are understaffed. But that said, our two highest-ticket departments in this city, police and fire, have no meaningful oversight like we subject all other departments to. And I know that there was an attempt to put together a citizen action committee that had no real teeth or no real oversight for police. I think it would serve everyone's purpose better if we just had a public safety oversight board. So I'd ask you to consider instituting one in the very near future. $50,000 to study a parking yet again. I don't know. It seems like we did that pretty recently in 2007. And lastly, the $150,000 Wayfinding Signage Program is one I support because it is one of our rare expenses that is making our city physically improved rather than just maintaining or staffing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Zeke, next public comment, please. Thank you.
Okay. Erica Crawford, you are online.
Welcome, Erica.
Hi there. Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm just sharing some brief comments today to express that the Chamber is supportive of any and all assistance available to our members, especially in light of the regional stay-at-home order and the restrictions to business activity that it brings. Additionally, we support the staff-recommended budget action to move funds from the SB 1090 ED fund to the general fund in order to facilitate completion of the Wayfinding Signage Program. This program was begun in the early part of 2019 and has already experienced significant expenditure of time and some money to date. Getting this across the finish line will assist future visitors to Morro Bay in navigating their way through all four of our economic centers, lifting up accessibility to all businesses in the city. Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Erica. Zeke, next public comment, please.
And nobody else in the queue has a hand raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. With that, I will get my video going and go ahead and close public comment. And this is Agenda Item 1. This is the Fiscal Year 2021 First Quarter Budget Performance and Status Report for the three-month period ending September 30th, 2020. And I'll be turning it over to Mr. Collins and Ms. Liptick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers and members of the public. Appreciate the opportunity to give an update on our budget in the first quarter. Next slide, please, Katie.
Frozen.
There you go. All right. Thank you. So we're going to give an overview, just sort of how we got to where we are really quickly, overview of our opportunities and challenges, and then look into the budget performance for Q1, general fund, the T-Bid, Measure Q, our enterprise funds, and briefly Water Reclamation Facility, and then provide the recommendations that are outlined in the Staff Report and open up the questions and discussion for Council. Next slide. They should all be familiar with the Rock Solid Together mantra. That's the approach we took beginning in April after the onset of COVID-19. We did provide an update to Council in September. We didn't have a lot of information, just maybe one month of TOT data, but certainly understood that we may see some revenue uptick based on the visitation we witnessed this summer. But now we're back formally with the Q1 to Council, and we have a lot more information to share. But as a reminder, next slide, please, Katie. We approached the fiscal year, well, to complete the fiscal year of 1920 and then into 2021, a very comprehensive approach to basically riding the ship and balancing the budget amongst a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. We had employee compensation reductions. We looked at operational expenses, you know, including Council, you know, forbearance on their stipend, our city attorney collecting less than he normally does, and then other vendors doing similar things, really looking at every single expense and scrutinizing it. And we still currently do that today. A healthy use of our emergency reserves, that's, and it's named in the name. It's to be used during emergencies, and this qualifies for certain. And we used about $1 million last fiscal year and looking to use about $1 million or more this year to help balance the budget. And then last but not least is the federal, state, and community assistance. We do have some CARES funding that's come through. There is discussion of another, another round of that. It seems to be endless discussion in Washington about that, but we may see some additional funds in the future. Nothing's certain at this time. The state is offering assistance to businesses, but not to cities. And then, of course, community assistance. And we are very thankful for the community-supported Measure E, which will bring about $2 million or more a year in the annual revenues to the city. However, we will not experience any of those revenues until fiscal year 2122. So just setting the table for Katie's discussion of where we are at today, and then I'll discuss the recommendations towards the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for turning it over to me. I'm glad to be with you today, which I will just adjust my camera. You cannot see me. I apologize for having to do this while we're having the community watch me struggle.
Take your time, Katie. Not a problem at all.
So at this point, we wanted to share with you the actual financial impacts on the general fund in the last fiscal year. So you would have some context as to our starting point on July 1st. So you'll see here a chart of our five largest revenue sources in the general fund. And you'll see the biggest loss or under-realized revenues in our transient occupancy tax. And in the report, there was a comparison of the same period year over year, and we've rebounded this year. But it was a pretty significant blow, particularly in March and April and May, that the city suffered as a result of the early shutdowns and impacts of COVID-19. You'll see that sales tax actually overperformed to a certain extent, so that mitigated the impacts of the loss in TOT and the business license losses as well. One of the most important things to remember is that the staff took into consideration the city manager and the former finance director and the team that was working on the budget, and took a conservative approach to anticipate a second wave of COVID. And you'll see that that's reflected in the budgets that we're currently reviewing in the current fiscal year and in the first quarter. We thought it was important to look at both the positives and the uncertainties and possibly the challenges that we're facing related to the first-quarter budget. The opportunities are many, and not listed on here is you have an extremely dedicated staff who is working tirelessly to provide exceptional service to the community. All of our budgets are tracking, particularly all of the enterprise funds and the general funds. The general fund revenues did rebound, but there are uncertainties associated with them. Cannabis revenue looks like it's going to be a positive impact on the city's general fund. There isn't a lot to report on that now, but I think by the next quarter, we should be able to give you some details about how that is coming into the city. As Scott mentioned, Measure E passed. That gives the city opportunities that didn't exist to replace some of the revenues that we've lost and to do some of the important work of high priorities to caring for the maintenance and services in the city. We're using this opportunity to redesign and streamline many of our operations to not only match our new health and safety options, but really to modernize the way that we're doing business in the city of Morro Bay. And so while it's challenging to balance that with the ongoing workload, we are trying to take some opportunities to redesign and streamline our operations. Again, the uncertainties are the impacts of the second surge of COVID-19, both on the health and well-being of our community. And that obviously includes the community of staff that provide the services to our community. The business community's resilience is an uncertainty, and there will be losses, unfortunately, in our business community. And we're trying to figure out everything that we can to be supportive of the business community so that they can be resilient. We have found that the applications for bricks and mortar, business license applications have declined since COVID. And so again, that's just another part of the new reality of how we're going to be conducting business in Morro Bay looking forward. And despite anticipating the second wave of COVID and the surge that we're now in, we're not sure how bad this will impact our revenues and for how long those losses will go on. I'm going to go to the uncertainties this time so I can end on a more positive note. Again, we don't know how long the stay-at-home order will last and when our community will actually get access to vaccines. I believe the mayor's going to announce a flu shot, a drive-through flu shot event that's happening, and that's really in anticipation to give us the opportunity to plan and to practice giving the vaccines. But right now, there's a lot of uncertainty around when that will happen in Morro Bay. When will we be able to reopen our city programs? You know, we miss our community members being at those programs. Kurt and his team have done a fantastic job in the Recreation Division of modifying as many of those programs as possible. But we have lots of other programs that we've had to suspend until we know more about when we'll be able to open them. It has a, you know, a cost savings or a cost avoidance piece of the puzzle, but because our recreation programs are subsidized by the general fund, there's also a revenue loss with that equation. And then really, the question of stamina of essential workers, not only in our medical profession and the parents who are essential workers trying to help kids get through school in a very different way, but also our city staff who are keeping up an incredible pace of both working on the health emergency as well as their regular workload. And we've reduced staff and other resources. And so we really have to be cognizant of how we help staff navigate through a very difficult and challenging time, not just for our staff, for the community as a whole, but we want to keep that front and center as a city leadership team so that we're thinking through how we can sustain and inspire and help the staff navigate and keep up their stamina to continue to serve the community. On the positive side, we've made progress on our One Water projects. I know that's been an incredibly important part of the city's response and trying to do right by the environment. And so we've made progress on many of those projects. And we've made great progress on the Wharf, and we've gotten great support from the feds and the state with very low-interest loans. The innovative program of the RV Pilot Program sponsored by the Harbor Department has been very successful. And again, you'll note in the later part of the presentation that we've unfortunately had to shutter that program right now because of the stay-at-home orders. And then there is investment happening on the Embarcadero, both private investment, there's grants that the commercial fishing industry has received and that we're going to be looking at how we can help achieve the renovations of some of our commercial fishing assets. So just to dive in a little bit deeper on the question that, or the issue that Scott made a point of, which is the use of our emergency reserves. As you can see on this slide, they are dwindling, which you would expect under the circumstances, but they're dwindling at a pretty significant pace. And once these dollars are gone, you don't have that contingency to rely on. So in last year, we spent about $1.1 million supporting the general fund to backfill the deficit that we were facing. And then in this fiscal year, we're projecting a $1.03 million use of those funds, leaving us with $1.45 million. And again, we're looking towards the next budget process to figure out how the Measure E money intertwines with the fiscal realities that we're going to be facing once we know some of the projected revenue impacts of the second wave and what we can anticipate for our forecast going forward. I'm going to jump into the general fund now. It is our biggest fund, and it's where we provide our general government services, police, fire, public works, parks and rec, the infrastructure of the team in City Hall that provides utility billing services, business license, TOT collection, keeping our city records and making sure that meetings like this can be on TV. So that's the general fund. We are trending both on the revenue side and the expenditure side in the right direction, though again, there are some question marks or some areas where we want to be careful. Again, we planned for the second wave and the surge, but there's also unpredictable results about when we will be able to contain the surge and then the unpredictable results until the vaccine is widely distributed. And I'm sorry to say that we don't have the crystal ball that's going to tell us when here in Morro Bay and on the Central Coast, we're going to have access to them. We're hoping soon. I know the county is planning for it, and we are part of those conversations as well. So on the revenue side, again, these are our five. And this slide is intended to show you the reduction that we took in our budget between 2019, 2020, so last fiscal year, and this fiscal year, to show that we reduced our budgets significantly in order to ensure that we were being conservative and made sure that we had sufficient funds to provide the services that we were planning to serve. So the red numbers are the reductions, the differences between the 2019-20 budget and the 2020 budget. And they range from 4% reductions to franchise fees, which tend to be a little bit more stable, to up to 36% in our transient occupancy tax based on the information that we had moving forward. The, this slide is intended to give you a sense of where we are at this quarter. So the adopted budget gives you a sense of the magnitude of the revenue that we're planning to bring in. The first quarter revenues is the second column of numbers. The third column is what we have actually booked in our accounting system on the TOT versus what we've earned. And I'm going to give a shot at explaining what the difference is. So when we receive a dollar of TOT, we receive it, let's say, in the month of August. In the month of August, the hoteliers and the vacation rental companies and owners are paying the month of July, but we book it in the accounting system as being received in August. So if we want to compare a similar period, we need to actually look at that which was earned between, in this particular case, July, August, and September. And we keep that on a separate spreadsheet, and we keep those, those numbers segregated from what we've actually booked in our accounting system. But it's actually what we earned for the actual month that it was where the person stayed in the hotel and paid the tax in. And so you can see that if you go based on our accounting system, which we have traditionally always done, it would show that we've collected 44.3% of the revenues that we expect. So that's the $820,000 that's in the column to the left. But if you go based on what we've actually earned and collected, we've collected 65% of the total annual budget. And so if you compare that to our budget, that gives you optimism that we've actually turned the corner and we're really on a, on a positive pathway to exceed what we budgeted. And I'll just warn again, and I know that I'm going to sound like a broken record by the time this presentation is over, we don't know what's going to happen from now until whenever the stay-at-home order is lifted. And again, it's a minimum of three weeks. We really don't know how long that's going to last this time. So anyways, I just wanted to share with you what the difference between those two columns are. And then the 2019-20 is what was booked in 1920. So that gives you a sense of whether we're on par with what we collected last year, what we booked, and whether we're exceeding it in any cases. And you'll see that in franchise fees and in business license, we are exceeding what we collected last year quite considerably. And the same is true for TOT. So just on the expenditure side, I wanted to highlight a few of the unusual circumstances that we're facing in all of our funds, pretty much, related to expenditures. So we've spent in the general fund 31% of the adopted budget. But it's important to remember that we made several large payments or semi-annual payments on July 1st or thereabouts that have been booked to the current quarter. So we paid CalPERS our unfunded accrual liability, which means that we're giving them additional payments for obligations that we accrued in the past earlier, because we could pay it over the year, but we paid it upfront because we actually get to save money if we give them the money upfront. And we saved about $60,000 to the general fund for that early payment. And again, that's about 3.3% of the total amount that we would have given to CalPERS for the general fund. The other large payment that we made was six months of insurance, and we got to make that in a, in two, two payments instead of one, which is traditionally what our insurance carrier required of us, is to make the whole payment on July 1st. But because so many cities are struggling with the current financial situation, they agreed to take two payments instead of one. The second one is due in January, and so we will book all of those expenses in the first three quarters. So there will likely be a similar issue until we get to the fourth quarter, with it looking like we spent more than we should be spending in those line items, but in actuality, we just made early payments. The other thing to remember in our expenditures is that there's, there was significant deployment of our firefighting resources for reimbursable wildfire throughout the state in the first quarter. I included a, a chart that showed all of our deployments. There were 12 deployments in the first quarter that accounted for 5283 staff hours. All year round. Those personnel costs are about $225,000. We also get reimbursed for administrative overhead and our vehicles that get used in those efforts. And just to give you an example, just for those 12 deployments, the city will be receiving $52,500 in order to reimburse the city for, to make it possible for those firefighters to be able to go out and assist, you know, other cities, our federal partners, our state, Cal Fire Partners, to address the ever-increasing challenges and threats of wildfire in the urban interface. So I'm going to move on to the tracking well upon revenues and expenditures. We're about 10% of expenditures. We've received about 40% of what we budgeted for the Morro Bay Tourism T-Bid. We have curtailed marketing, so the expenditure We have curtailed marketing, so the expenditures being as low as they are is really our focus on only the things that have to get done, keep those revenues in our back pocket for when it's really going to make a difference.
Pardon me, Katie, pardon me.
The city council.
Katie, pardon me.
Yep.
You're breaking up to the point, we can't understand what you're saying for quite a few words. If you would stop sharing your video, you might have a better bandwidth.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, do I need to go back?
Uh, maybe one slide.
Repeat performance?
There you go, yeah, we do that.
Yeah. You can see whether I say the same things in the same way, right? This is a test. Yeah, I apologize for that. Okay, so back on the general fund, I just wanted to highlight that the city has spent about 31% of the expenditure budget on, of the adopted budget so far. Part of that reason is that we made two fairly large payments on July 1st. One to save money, so our CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability gets paid, can be paid over the course of the year, but because we paid it early, we also saved about $60,000, which is about 3.3% of the total that we paid at CalPERS for this, for the general fund. And then six months of insurance with no penalty. So basically, we're getting the insurance coverage, we get to keep our money until January 1st, but the expenses show for all of the funds early in the year. If we remove the CalPERS payment alone, the city's spent approximately 24.02%, and so we're right on target for the expenditures. We also spent some significant amount of money on deployments of our firefighting personnel on 12 deployments throughout, I apologize for that, throughout the state. And the 12 deployments equaled 5,284 staff hours. There's 2,080 staff hours in a year, and so we basically have dedicated two individuals, if they were just working full-time, all day, every day, at an eight-to-five job. Our personnel costs were about a quarter of a million dollars. And in addition to the personnel costs being reimbursed, we receive admin overhead, which comes back to the city, that reimburses the city for having our vehicles maintained and what they take, training firefighters, making sure that everybody gets paid on time in city hall, making sure that the insurance gets paid for that matter, for our employees. So those are expenses that come back to, or dollars that come back to the city for our administrative overhead that helps us support our other cities and federal government and our state CalFire throughout the state. And I just want to check, are we still good on the sound?
You're coming through loud and clear, Katie.
Okay, great. So I'm going to head over to the Morro Bay Tourism Improvement District, the T-Bid and we're probably underperforming in terms of our expenditures or underspending, but that's really on purpose because we've curtailed our marketing during COVID-19 and we're holding our revenues in our back pocket so that when the time is right, we'll have these resources to make Morro Bay a great place to visit again and a safe place to visit again. We're also moving forward with a council authorized project to evaluate the transition of the T-Bid to a five-year term as well as a nonprofit board of directors that leads the organization. As it relates to Measure Q, our revenues in the first quarter were approximately 11.31%. I believe that that is in line with where our general sales tax is, and so I'm hoping that that trend will continue. You'll remember last year, we actually overperformed in terms of bringing in more sales tax than we had budgeted, so I'm hopeful that that's the case. Our expenditures on Measure Q are at 13.9%, and some of that has to do with the fact that there are several capital projects that are budgeted that have had no expenditures to date. Our Measure Q pavement management plan implementation has been put on hold in order to ensure that we were receiving sufficient funds to be able to expend them. And we are proposing to reallocate some of those funds, about $52,000, for the second half of the fiscal year in order to fund an unfunded vacant police officer position. So this was something that was when you expenditures for 2020, 2021, as well as a very consistent request from the community survey that the city did in the last six to eight months. And Scott can certainly talk to that if that's something that the council needs. So I'm going to move on to our enterprise funds, and I'm going to start with our harbor fund, who's been very busy today because of the high surf advisory. Our revenues have been coming in at about 21%, our expenditures at 32.97, and I'll just remind everybody again, that 32, almost 33% is really about those lump sum payments for the year that we had already booked to each of the enterprise funds. Our RV pilot program has been a great success. If I understand it correctly, we've spent a little bit more to get it on the ground or off the ground, if you will, but our revenues have been steady. The revenues are not currently booked to our revenue budget, and so it's unfortunately closing due to the stay-at-home order, but we think that it might be something to consider for the future. I'm going to take a drink of water and I'll be right back with you. Thanks for holding on for that. We are proposing two adjustments in the harbor fund. One is to propose waiving the Consumer Price Index increase for 2020, 2021. That's the financial impact, $1,000. We think we can make is over realization of revenues over expenditures, so we'll be gaining some additional revenues. And then we've also proposed to use $10,000 from the Triangle Lot Fund. And then the second one is an allocation from the Harbor Accumulation Fund of $50,000 to do leasehold improvements at the former Morro Bay Aquarium location. For water and sewer, we're reviewing them together because they're hand in glove in terms of creating a nice and safe way for us to have one water. Water revenues are at about 24.9%, and our expenditures are at 34.9%. You'll see that with the harbor, that was about the same level of expenditures as well. I'll note the caution that we come down to when we get to the third bullet. Our sewer revenues are about where they should be at this time of the year, and our expenditures are slightly less than they should be, and that is as a result of some changes in the staffing and the structure within the sewer funds. The note of caution has to do with our water and sewer revenues. Our utility bill delinquency rate has been on the rise. We have about, I believe, 5,500 customer accounts. In April, we had 55 accounts that were delinquent totaling $23,516. In November, that has increased to 190 accounts that are delinquent totaling 100 and almost $40,000. The city staff in the finance department does a great job of reaching out to those customers that are having challenges, keeping current. We've had some staff turnover, so those delinquency notices have not gone out recently since the staff turnover, but after the first of the year, we'll start that effort again. We work very cooperatively and collaboratively with our account holders to find a payment plan that works for them. We also let folks know about our utility discount program that they have to apply for. It's a going-forward application of the discount, but we will also make sure that the holders of the delinquents' accounts knows about that program as well. And then again, progress on the one water projects is moving forward as quickly as possible, and they're very complimentary to the WRF project. Speaking of the WRF project, the WRF project has been under construction and there has been significant progress made on site. The council received the quarterly update from the program manager on, in November. The first quarter expenditures is approximately 1.6, and I just wanted to assure the council and the community that we are actively working to get drawdowns from the federal government, from the loans that they've offered the city, to make sure that we're reimbursing the costs that we're covering through the water and sewer funds. So this has been a team effort, but a big shout out to the team in our Public Works Department who are staying on top of this, and the federal government has been very responsive in terms of making those drawdowns available to us in a relatively fast way, particularly compared to some of the other, Scott, who's going to go over our recommendations.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate you going through all that, and thanks for joining our team. She's been a delight to work with so far, and appreciate you marshaling all this on the fly while learning our organization and staff and our community. What we have before you is a couple of recommendations, and the third is actually going to be, we recommend rolled into the second recommendation, but receive the report that you just were presented to orally, but also the staff report. And then adopt resolution number 10120, authorizing staff to proceed with the first quarter budget adjustment, and would recommend amending that resolution to include item seven to exhibit A, which would allocate $34,000 for small business grants to the Morro Bay businesses from the Senate Bill 1090 funds that are available in our economic development fund. Next slide, please, Katie. Okay, and then just I'll briefly hit on the other six items at their end of the staff report, which is outlined in resolution 10120. We had the Police Department parking annex repairs and repaving totaling $70,000, and it's important to note, that's not the parking lot that our caller referred to. It's an annex across the street from the Police Department, which is in pretty, pretty bad shape, and it was damaged by the work going on next door by crane. The funding will come out of the government impact fees related to police specifically, so it can only be used for those purposes, no other uses. So it is a related expense, it's not a general fund expenditure, and the parking lot needs help. The harbor fund is to provide rent relief. We've had ongoing discussions with leaseholders. We are, for all intents and purposes, the landlord down on the waterfront, and just like any other landlord situation, with tenants are in trouble, we're trying to do our best to keep these businesses operating and effective, and of course, protecting our revenue sources all the same. So these discussions are ongoing. We would recommend continuing to allow those businesses that need to withhold payment now to continue to do so as we see how bad this second surge is, and then come back to council with more recommendations. The harbor fund for funding for the lease site, the old aquarium site, great point raised by the caller, yes, the aquarium is no longer moving forward. Central Coast Aquarium is, just like a lot of other nonprofits, museums especially, have been hit really hard by COVID-19, so their focus now is really on the core mission of supporting the Avala Museum and keeping that going forward, and they're essentially working with volunteers only at this point. So we're no longer proceeding forward with the aquarium project there, and so we're looking forward to getting three stacks in Rock Brewery open on that site. These are lease site improvements that are not related to tenant improvements, it's really the underbelly of the building, and we think it's a worthy expense, given the revenues that we would render and see in the future. The fourth is to fill a vacant police officer position that's been held vacant as a way as another effort to stem the tide or the loss of revenue and help balance the budget. However, as our chief would, you know, be happy to discuss, it has had an impact on operations. Our guys and gals work very hard, and overtime costs do tend to go up because we still have to respond to those calls for service, which have gone up by about 25% this year over last. We feel that Measure Q is the appropriate use for the remainder of the fiscal year, and we would reevaluate whether it should remain with Measure Q or be a general fund expense in fiscal year 21, 22. The parking management strategies and best practices, it's a study. Council did approve moving forward with this when we were looking at different revenue enhancement options back in April, May, and authorized me to proceed forward, and this is the budget authority we're seeking after the fact. They've done a review during peak season and non-peak season, and we expect to get recommendations or results and recommendations hopefully later this winter to present to the community. That could be potential recommendation for paid parking or not, but it's certainly worth the effort, given that the last study was done in 2007 and the number of visitors to Morro Bay has grown significantly since that time. So our situation may be different 13 years later. Last is the wayfinding signs fabrication. We would be recommending that come from the Senate Bill 1090 funds. We've already completed design, we've looked at all the appropriate places to place these, we've done outreach to the business community, certainly looking forward to removing the antiquated signage in our community and replacing it with modern signage that's effective. And we believe it's the right source of funding from Senate Bill 1090 again. None of these recommendations are pulling from the general fund. So with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that city council has. I think we have most of our department heads on the Zoom. Thank you. Katie, you can share your screen, thanks.
Yes, if we can get the screen down, that'd be great. Okay, thank you so much, Scott and Katie, for a very comprehensive, not only staff report, but presentation, and we do appreciate that. Go ahead and start with some council questions. I'll maybe start off. Have, given the fact that CalPERS in this last fiscal year had a return on investment of only 4.8% with a discount rate of assumption of 7%, and that there's been a discussion that they may well decrease their discount rate to 6.5%, have we done any internal analysis on what the impact of either their last year's decreased investment return might have on us as a city and/or what the future potential reduction in discount rate might be from a financial impact?
Yeah, we have not, we've not had the capacity to do that. We expect that it would be a significant impact. We haven't put We haven't put dollars to, our pen to paper on that. But, you know, that's sort of why we're, you know, being cautious to begin with, especially with COVID, and that was with their 10-year forecast sort of alluded to issues prior to any further discount being handed down by CalPERS. So we expect that it will be a big hit, and that we want to think about, you know, how we place Measure E and other things in that context moving forward, so that we don't run into an issue a few years down the road where we're looking at major deficits. So we're gonna be looking at that closely. Typically, the impacts aren't felt for at least a couple of years. I think CalPERS is sensitive to how hard COVID-19 has impacted local governments, specifically in California, and definitely wary of handing down a discount which would push cities over the fiscal cliff and lead to further damage to their fund. So they are cognizant of that, so we expect that we'll probably have a couple of years to prepare for that. But we don't know where they're gonna go with it, and they typically tip their hat before those come, so we'll have some time to prepare.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so add...
Go ahead, Katie.
I was just gonna add that they actually give in the actuarial analyses that we get on an annual basis for each of the funds, some projections about those potential costs. So we should be able to run those as part of the 10-year forecast, and so maybe we'll do a couple of models. But Scott's absolutely right, it's a couple of years down the road, but you've gotta be planning now if there's gonna be a major impact.
Great, thanks for that. Are we still operating under the emergency plan that was implemented in March?
We are, and that's why we're asking for your approval on filling the vacant police officer position. We felt it was important that, I mean, from a budgetary standpoint, but also just honoring the frees that we've placed on filling vacant positions. You know, we have to be able to justify that. The position was justified to me, but ultimately, the council needs to weigh in on that. But ultimately, every expense is still being scrutinized, and we're not traveling. Training is very minimum, other than what's required by the various departments.
Good, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we were still operating under that plan. I thought we were. Am I correct in remembering that the salary concessions by the various entities will be discontinued at the end of December?
For 90% of employees, that's correct. One group, there's a different agreement, arrangement, but that's for most of the employees, yes.
And do we have any indication of the second quarter of the fiscal year, potentially? And I don't want to put you on the spot by saying, oh, it looks great, or it looks bad, but any idea for at least October, November, and eight days into December, how we're trending early on with TOT or sales tax?
Yeah, TOT, we've seen a precipitous increase in recovery from the previous, well, compared to the previous year. So we, I think by August, our TOT numbers had matched the previous August, and then September and October have eclipsed that, and so those are looking pretty strong. We know there was a major impact on TOT, March, April, May, related to the COVID state home orders or sheltered home orders. However, in this case, the new order from the governor does not specify that hotels and vacation rentals and RV parks, they can accept within-state travel, they just can't accept out-of-state travel unless there's an essential purpose assigned to that. So we don't expect that the impact will be quite as a punch as it was in March, April, and May. But it remains to be seen how that may trickle down to, you know, holiday sales and those kind of things with limited retail and folks feeling the punch from, you know, the government not kind of reinvesting in unemployment and those kind of things. We may see a trickle-down effect in overall spending, but TOT is definitely, the first part of Q2 is looking good.
Good, thanks. You mentioned in the staff report, Measure E20. You anticipate collections to begin in April. When do you suspect we might receive our first payments or revenue stream from that?
So we receive the money in arrears, so in June, we will receive the money for April. So we'll receive essentially one month of payment in this fiscal year. And the way that the sales tax consultant has described it is that because it's a new tax, it doesn't always get implemented in a smooth way by everybody, straight away. So I wouldn't anticipate that April will be a sign of exactly where we'll end up eventually.
And if I recall correctly, we did not budget any revenues for Measure E20 in this fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
And I noticed your comments with regard to cannabis. I know we have my term, two-year moratorium on utilization of those revenues, and it looks like your recommendation, I just want to clarify it, is that we consider using all cannabis funds to go back to replenish the general fund, emergency reserve?
That's what our recommendation is at this stage, and I think that Scott and I have talked about the declining amount that's in the reserve, and that we've gotta take some pretty bold actions to replenish that, and this seems like a wise investment of those resources, since they're not planned for anything else right now.
Yeah, so I would agree with that, but I would ask, do you know, or what do you anticipate the amount might be, given the fact that only one entity has opened up just a few weeks ago, and the second entity is not open yet in this fiscal year? Do we have any idea what the magnitude of the revenue might be?
Probably a hundred thousand dollars would be the floor, but it's hard to say how. Yeah, and we may experience what they experienced in Grover Beach, where there was an exponential increase month over month. Of course, that will be tempered when the other dispensary opens. They're currently have a lot of crews in their building, constructing the layout of that building, so we could see them open several months, and that would certainly change that number.
So, and thanks for the chart on the general fund and the general fund emergency reserve drawdown, both in your presentation and the staff report. So I've noted that at the end of this fiscal year, the total drawdown will be about 2.357 million dollars, which leaves basically about a third of the remainder of the general fund emergency reserve, if we perform as expected through the remainder of this fiscal year. My question is, or first an observation that leads to a question. The observation is, that's two-thirds of the general fund emergency reserve that has been depleted or will be depleted at the end of the year, which in my mind is huge. What potential does a city have to draw revenues from other sources, like governmental funds, et cetera, and/or water fund potentially, if you deplete your emergency reserve? Are there opportunities to move temporarily, to loan monies, to replenish the emergency reserve, and what are those sources of funds?
You can. Certain funds can loan in different directions. Water and sewer specifically, you could do that to the general fund under, you know, terms would have to be drawn up and obviously have to be adopted by city council, have clarity about what it'll be used for and what the repayment process will be and interest rates and the like. We don't anticipate we would need to go there, but, you know, it's 2020, so all bets are off. Also, the number that we show, that one point, almost 1.3 million dollars projected, that does include a pretty significant whack by a second surge, and like I said, I think the TOT numbers may hold up better than they did with the first surge, so that number may be, I would just say that number is very conservative. So we may wind up having a higher fund balance at the end of the year. But that's, again, that's sort of a word of caution, we just don't know. So yes, definitely can use, can borrow, terms would have to be drawn up, have to be approved by council, and there'd have to be a repayment plan.
Okay. With regard to Sean Green's question about the compounding effect on the CPI rent reduction, did you mean for it to be compounded or not?
That's an excellent question. I don't know if we got that far, and Eric Hendersby has popped up, so maybe he has some thoughts on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, certainly we weren't intending and wouldn't write it up such that we would lose the compounding aspect of it. Come next year, assuming, again, we get back to whatever normal is, we would look at the CPI ratchet next time around, and it's gonna take a little bigger jump because they're gonna skip over this year, but that's assuming we're back into normal times next year.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then with regard to the remainder of the fiscal year, you guys have been very good about calling out uncertainty, and Katie, you had a list of things that are contributing to the uncertainty. I guess this is more of a touchy-feely question and less of an exact dollar question, and the touchy-feely question is, and let me preface it just by saying, you know, in March, when the, basically, COVID hit, we experienced marked revenue reductions, but we recovered fairly quickly in the first quarter of the fiscal year due to actually high tourism levels and the opportunity to have a fair reopening. Now, we're moving in just the opposite direction back to where we were, even though there's this sense of vaccine coming. We're probably not gonna realize herd immunity for six or eight months. And the question is for staff, are you significantly concerned about these uncertainties, such that you think we need to come back in another session and look at scrutinizing further budget reductions with regard to expenses and/or other revenue opportunities? And I know it's a broad question, but I had to ask it.
Yeah, that's a good question, and certainly on our mind, and again, thankful that council adopted the budget the way they did with that very conservative and cautious approach that supports, you know, us continuing on the path we're on without having to make further cuts. However, if we see something significantly deviate from our expenses or revenues, then even more so than that conservative approach, then we would be back in front of you immediately talking about that. But we don't see those signs out there. We don't see hotels closing, retail will be open. We do see impacts to some sales tax because of some of the other businesses that will be closed, but it just, we just don't see the impact quite as significant as the onset. People have kind of created their own sense of what is right or wrong, whether, you know, I know we have our, we all have our position on how we're gonna approach COVID, but there are those out in the world who, you know, are continuing to travel, continue to do things they normally did, and there, in a lot of respects, that's still gonna be allowed. And so while it started in March, people were terrified as to what COVID was, and so I think, I just think there's a different mindset, especially when you talk about the vaccine. I think it's changed consumer patterns to such a level that we won't see that precipitous drop-off like we saw in March and April and May, if that makes sense.
Good, good.
But if that changes, naturally, we'll be right back here, and we have, the city manager has the flexibility, authority to make drastic changes on the fly and then come back and seek council ratification of those decisions.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate your proactive response initially and your ongoing concerns, as evidenced in your great staff report, raising, I think, some very important questions. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Meg Scherson. Questions, please?
Yes, I do have questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Taking a while for me to get used to actually being on screen. Thank you, Katie, for that, and Scott, for that great report, and also thank you, Katie, for meeting with me yesterday and answering most of my questions about the report, which I will not repeat here, and I'm glad you clarified some of the points in your presentation, so I appreciate it. Let me ask a question about the deferral of the harbor lease payments, and I know there's a committee that is considering what you might do about those, and I'm wondering if you could tell me what some of those options might be? And are we carrying that as an accounts receivable at this point? So the assumption is that we will receive it, but it does not show in our revenues, correct? Yep.
Eric, you wanna pop in, or do you want me to give it a try? And you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll jump in if you don't mind.
Nope, I do not.
We are keeping them all on the books, on the receivables end. You know, what the final outcome is, we don't yet know. If we end up deferring some amount of rent, we'd have to correct the books, but right now, we're just carrying it on the books and not charging any penalties or late fees. You know, the options, there's a few we've been discussing, from flat out, you know, a percentage of rent relief versus a percent gross-based formula, to maybe decreasing your rent by the amount of hard costs a leaseholder may have for complying with all the COVID stuff. So there's a suite of things on the table that we're bouncing back and forth with the group. There's, I think, four or five of them that are regular meters with us, and they've been really great at canvassing their whole group, so we don't have to deal with six or seven or eight or nine or 10 people, we only have to deal with a few. So they're all, you know, right now, we're, you know, we agreed to bring the CPI waiver for now, and then keep negotiating on the other items with the hope of, you know, last time we met was before we went dark purple or whatever our new color is. So things have changed a little bit, but we've still been sort of kicking the can down the road with them, thinking, okay, we're gonna get to it, let's keep negotiating. Meanwhile, we'll keep carrying them on the books, so, you know, I won't say we're landed hard on any one particular of the options, but those are kind of the three primary ones out there right now.
And when do you think you might be able to come to council with a recommendation?
I'd love to get back, you know, I'd hate to jinx it and then tell you something, but, I mean, I'd love to get back at mid-year, you know, to where we can holistically bring it into the budget and have closure on it, but largely, it's gonna depend, obviously, on COVID and what happens, and, you know, we made certain assumptions, pretty drastic assumptions in this budget on what revenues we're gonna do, that have, you know, borne out to a degree, but as you've heard, you know, some of the things aren't quite as bad, at least haven't been up until now, until things really close back down, so. But I'm hopeful that we can bring something back at mid-year budget adjustment and be done with it and get normal again.
Thank you. And I noticed that in all of the recommendations, with the exception of the one for the funding of the police officer for the next six months, you all are drawing on funds that already exist, and are, we've got in special funds, and if you could just elaborate for the sake of the public, what those various funds are, how we happen to have them, who pays into them, and obviously, we are not talking about spending new money that we don't have, this is already money that's in the bank, so. And will those be used to transfer to the general fund?
Right.
Which maybe a lot of people would like to do, but we're not. So I just want the public to understand where those monies are coming from and who pays into them.
Absolutely. So I'll just go down one by one. So the police department parking annex repairs comes from governmental impact fees. Those are paid by developers to try to defray the costs of services provided by, public services provided by a variety of departments, including the police department. And so there's a specific amount of money that has to go towards enhancements for the police department, for them to be able to provide better service, and so that is that dedicated fund. The Harbor Fund is an enterprise fund. The only way to move money back and forth is through interfund transfers for services provided either by the harbor or for, by the general fund, and so that's containing the $24,000. And then the Triangle Lot Fund is a harbor fund that gets money from renting for boat storage, so it's their property, it's not the general fund's property, and it must be used for harbor fund purposes. property and it must be used for harbor fund purposes. The lease improvements are coming out of the harbor accumulation fund, which again is dedicated to uses by the harbor director and obviously approved by the city council. But that's again, not a fund that can be transferred to the general fund. The police officer fund or the funding, the police officer position is coming from Measure Q, which is a general purpose tax, but it has already been allocated for pavement management. So we're not taking any extra money from Measure Q. It's just reallocating it from one high priority purpose to another. The study from, about the parking management and best practices is coming from the Parking Innu Fund. Again, that's a fund that's paid into, to compensate the city for investments that we've made for parking. And again, it can only be used for things related to parking. So it can't just be sent over for any particular purpose. And then the wayfinding signage is being paid for by the SB 1090 Economic Development Fund. Those monies were negotiated as part of a settlement that I'm proud to say I was part of when I was here before. And those have to be spent on eligible economic development activities. And that has to be reported to PG&E and the public so that there is a check and balance on that. And then the same funding source is coming, is paying for the potential grant money that would be spent for more obeyed businesses.
And to follow up on the parking study, as I understand it, in part, we are doing this because if we wanted to have paid parking, we would have to get a permit for that or authority to do that from the Coastal Commission. And they require such a study before they would even consider it. Is that correct?
Yeah. And I also think you want to be able to explain to, you know, those who may not understand why paid parking would be necessary, particularly like business owners who could see it as a, you know, an impact on economic vitality. So trying, taking a bird's eye view of your parking situation and providing some analysis will help either make the case or not for parking management strategies that could include paid parking. But yes, of course, the Coastal Commission is wary of any infringement on coastal access. They see pay for anything as a potential waving away or just, I don't know, disincentive for those with lower economic means. And so they certainly are very scrutinizing of anything like this. We would have to make a good case that they in fact wouldn't be prohibited from parking. You have to have some free parking areas, of course, and potentially a local parking program as well. But yes, the first step is to be able to demonstrate there is a need for paid parking to address your parking situation.
Okay. And with respect to the aquarium, the old aquarium site, just to be clear, and I know that you mentioned that we, the aquarium is really kind of off the table. So we are talking about not tearing the building down. And in fact, the Three Stacks in a Rock, are they considering a long-term lease with the city then?
I think they have an interest in that and that would be a subject of discussions of negotiations. But I, I'd imagine the city putting, the money we're putting in, that they're putting in significant higher amounts for tenant improvements, that they want a long enough timeframe to recoup those costs and then ultimately some profit. So we expect that would be a subject of closed session discussions in the near term.
Right. And my last question, is it possible at all that some of the CARES money or some of the money that the federal government has been giving in the form of grants could cover utility delinquencies? I'm just curious to know if that might be an eligible cost either by the citizens themselves or by the city, should we not be able to collect those, the delinquent amounts?
That's a great question. The CARES Act that we've, we've already received, a hundred thousand-ish, has already been sort of booked into this budget. And we're able to recoup, you know, fire or police expenses related to the COVID response. So we've already basically expended the CARES Act funds. But the next round, if there's another round, we can certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you for that. And Councilmember Heller, sir, questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You and Councilmember McPherson have asked most of my questions, but I have a few more. First of all, Katie, you're doing a great job. You've got big shoes to fill and you stepped right into them. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Regarding cannabis, I keep seeing that empty storefront and I keep wondering when's that going to open. So, Mr. Collins, you got any new news on that? Or when will we be getting revenue from that place?
Great, great question. I know there was about three or four months where no activity was occurring and we were trying our best to get updates from the purveyors. And I understand they were opening another store in the state and that they pulled staff off of that to complete construction of that facility. So they're back here, seem to be having a lot of folks working in that space this time. Based on sort of where Perfect Union was, when, when they started to line up their construction, I think it was about two months, three months after that before they were open. But it could be quicker than that. I don't know. Scott has anything more to add to that? I think they've already kind of done all their permitting on the building side.
Mr. Graham, you got anything on that?
I don't really have anything to add. I mean, they, you know, they have their lease contractor out there and they have the trades on site. So they're moving fast. So I would anticipate, you know, Scott's timeline seems about right. I mean, they're probably, you know, you know, a month or two out. I mean, probably a couple of months out with holidays from completing their work.
Okay. Thank you for that. A couple of questions about sales tax. So we went from the seven and a half percent to eight and a half. So just so everyone understands, I think the change with respect to our revenue is one cent for every dollar spent. Is that correct? So I mean, it's seven and a half percent. The city got one penny. Where'd the rest of it go?
Right all over. Yeah, yeah. The state takes their, their whack and then the county. And then we get our, we have the, we have the Measure Q, which is a half cent. And then I think we also get some of the proceeds in the base level. And then, you know, with Measure, Measure E, it's another cent on top of that.
The state takes the biggest chunk, don't they?
Absolutely. Of the, of the, the base level, seven and a quarter, they take the biggest chunk. And we get a little bit of that. And then we have Measure Q and now Measure E.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the public understood that this increase is basically one penny per dollar more to the city. So stamina of the staff, I am concerned about that. Mr. Collins, how long can you hold on here?
Well, I think, I think we do our best through humor and encouraging folks to take time off and covering ourselves. And I also believe the council support and community support has been phenomenal and that, that's heartening to, to us and keeps us going. And we also know that everybody else in the community is dealing with the same exact thing we are and that we need to put our best foot forward and help lead. So even though it is challenging, we're all in this together. So I appreciate the question, Councilmember Heller. And I know you all care deeply about our wellbeing and appreciate that. And at this point, I don't see any cracks. I think the vaccine around the corner is giving us hope. Obviously, we were heartened by the community's support for Measure E that says a lot about their belief in the city, belief in the council leadership and belief in staff.
Okay. The delinquent utility bill. So the jump from 55 to 190. So 55 would be about 1% of our customers and the 190 with some quick math here is like three and a half percent. That's over what timeframe? How long did that increase happen?
From April until November.
Okay, thank you. General comments. So the harbor lease payments roughly, Mr. Hendersby, how much, what kind of dollars are we talking about here in terms of what's been deferred?
Oh, so we've got two, two chunks of money deferred, some from last fiscal year. And I think in Katie's staff report, that fiscal year's audited close. So anything more we receive, we've probably got about 55,000 left over from last fiscal year that if we receive any, it'll get booked into this fiscal year. So that'll be sort of a bonus. So about 55,000 from last year. And so far in this fiscal year and everybody else is, you know, there's only a few still deferred from last year and this year. And this year, I'm going to say we've got, yeah, there's probably another 60 or 70,000.
So in terms of percentage of your normal annual revenue, what are we looking at in terms of what's deferred at this point roughly, you know?
Oh man, math in public, huh?
Sorry. I have a calculator. If you give me the numbers, I'll do the.
Oh, I have a calculator.
Oh, okay.
I'm drawing the numbers off the top of my head.
What's the annual revenue typically?
Well, that's what I'm figuring here. I think.
I should, I should know that.
Hang on. Uh, maybe 5%? Total revenues, total minimum revenues or base revenues are about 1.5 million.
Okay. And so a percentage of the leaseholders are deferring their, their payments? Or is everybody doing it?
No, not everybody. I've probably got, yeah, maybe four or five at this point that have deferred.
Okay.
And some that deferred out of last year. A few have carried to this year, but the majority of them paid off and got good with last year.
Okay. Thanks for that. Then going to the budget adjustments, the six items, the parking annex repair. Thank you for clarifying that it's the annex building, not the, not the main building. So it's mentioned here that there's, in the governmental impact fee account, there's a balance, current balance is 78,253. And we want to appropriate 70,000 of that. Is that correct? For the, for the paving repair?
Yes, it is. That's correct. And I just want to clarify that that's the amount that's dedicated to the police department.
Gotcha. Right.
So it's not the totality of everything that's available in that.
Do you know how long it takes to accrue that amount? I mean, do we go through that every year and spend it? Or, and this, you may not be able to answer this, Katie, but does somebody know what that might roughly be?
That takes a while to, and it's all based on projects. You know, the council will be looking at our impact fees, I would say, either in January or February of next year, you know, as part of our fee study, the last phase. But yeah, and Scott Graham is, is our project guru. But I, I think it takes quite a while to build that up. However, if we have a few big projects come through, then that could replenish quickly. So it all depends.
So do you think on average, this would be like a five-year accumulation or 10?
Great question. Scott, any idea?
I would, I mean, I would have to go back and look at, you know, when we've drawn down money from the account first. I mean, I can't really tell without looking at them.
Because I know the reason, go ahead.
No, I mean, I can't really tell. Other than that, I would say, you know, Scott's correct. It also is predicated on kind of the size of the projects that we see coming forward. As an example, the hotel project on Tascadura Road just submitted, they'll be paying significant fees, the formal impact fees from the city standpoint. So, so there'll be some, you know, money going back in from that project.
Okay. And then there's also a note here about a new CIP general fund 915. So is that specifically for capital projects for the police? Is that what that account is?
I believe that's the general fund. I'm going to have to double check, Councilmember, just so I don't give you bad information.
Basically, I think what that means, Councilmember Heller, is that we have to create an account. The fund is not, we just have to create a.
It's a project.
Because this becomes a standalone project. Sorry.
Okay. So I guess that where we're getting to on this, I'm just wondering, the $78,000, aren't there a number of capital needs that the police department has talked about and wants done? And is this the most important of them at this point in time? And so I don't know. Chief Cox, you can answer that or?
Yes, sir. And with the, with the limited amount that's there, this is a project that's been pending for years. And I don't know, I've submitted some photographs of the annex parking lot. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at those. The majority of that parking lot has never been paved. So it's, it's dirt. It's really a dilapidated lot with dirt and some gravel in it. And it's something that we use on a daily basis. Our employees park in there. We keep all of our police volunteer vehicles, our radar trailer, our message boards, our, our police motorcycles, our bicycles, you know, we, it's a majority of storage and it's also got additional evidence storage for us as well. So it's something that we use daily. And again, the parking lot is in such poor shape, you know, it's riddled with, with potholes and some ruts and now some, some damage from a crane that they utilized when they put in the, the new coffee shop, that it also damaged the, the wire electronic mechanisms that control the gate. So the gate really does not operate correctly. And recently, we just had the gate automatically close on one of our employees' vehicles because of it not operating properly. So it really is something that's in, in bad repair and something that would really be useful for us to be able, because it is something that we utilize every day for, for a variety of our equipment and vehicles.
And, and it, to be clear, and I know that you understand this, Councilmember Heller, but just for the public, that those funds couldn't be used to purchase vehicles or pay for staff in the police department. It's, it's, it's hard construction and, you know, the chief won't say it. But, you know, the police station is old, significantly old.
I've heard him say that.
Yeah, he won't say it publicly.
Well, unfortunately, that, that fund is limited and the repetitive that we would need for the department would, would far exceed that.
Correct. Multi-million.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make the best use of the, of the funds for something else that we use on a, on a daily basis.
I'm sure you are. Thank you for that explanation. Now, there's some damage done by the crane. Are you convinced you're going to get your $10,000 or whatever?
We're working with the, the owner of that business and they, they worked out a resolution with us that they will pay us for the damages that were caused by their equipment when they were setting that building. So we've already worked that out with them. And that's part of the project account that, that our city staff had set up so that we would be able to put their reimbursement for the damages into that account.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. That's all for that item. Let's see, the, okay, the appropriation of 50,000. So I thought we had talked about this and resolved this, but I guess maybe it needed to come back to council here. So it's coming from the Harbor Accumulation Fund for leasehold improvements. Well, you know, I just want to get Three Stacks in a Rock, if that's who ends up leasing the place, get them up and running as soon as possible. So I just see an opportunity here if we move forward with this. Is there some way that we can expedite the work that the city has to do in order to get this thing turned over to the leaseholder as soon as possible? Any ideas? I know everybody's busy.
I'll, I'll jump back in. I'm working with Three Stacks as engineer and their construction manager on, more so their engineer, because I'm going to use that person to do the engineering we need to do. So it all works together and we're cohesively working on the same plan. So she's working up those plans now. It's just a matter of getting some estimates and then putting some contracting out to bid for that work or some work, depending on the, on the dollar mountain, where our contracting goes, whether I have to bid or not. So I'm, I'm knock on wood, I think I'm going to get comfortably ahead of Three Stacks and then they're part of the project. They've got a lot more to do, as you know, on the interior of that building than we have to do.
Yeah. Okay. Let me know if I can help in some way. The next one, the police officer vacancy. So the money would take, basically, the way I did, it'll take us through three quarters. So Chief, what happens if the end of three quarters, our financial position is not improved much? And you have this officer that we can no longer support?
Well, good question. We're hoping that the Measure E funds will pick up at that point after the end of this first fiscal year, that will make up that difference. Again, we want people to understand, we're not adding a position. We're trying to fill a vacant position that we've held open since March, since the COVID thing first took place. So again, we've seen such an increase in about two. uh, uh, first took, uh, place. So again, we, we've seen such an increase in about twenty-five, thirty percent, increasing calls for service and the workload that these guys are handling. So, so we're really just trying to fill that spot that, that we've held. Um, and I will share with you that, because it'll be coming out over the next day or two, but, uh, I, I've got another officer that's turning in a resignation today. Uh, so I'm going to have to fill another position. So, so if I don't work on filling this vacancy, you know, i- if it takes me another month or two, uh, to fill this upcoming one, then I'm back down two positions. Uh, and again, a- as you know, I, I have to train these guys. It takes four months of FTO, uh, to get them to where they can operate as a solo police officer by themselves. Uh, and, and we've had to do that over the last two years on a consistent basis, uh, where we've replaced nine positions. Um, so, so we've really got to, to work on keeping a consistent staff here, uh, keeping them available and healthy to keep this community safe. And that's what we're trying to do.
I know how hard you work to find good people. So your calls are up twenty-five percent. Can you talk to me about what those are? Is it just more of the same or is it different kind of calls? I'm curious.
A great question. And, and they're a little bit of everything. A lot of it is, is COVID-related, uh, but we're seeing an influx of people that have come into the area, even though there have been stay-at-home orders, uh, for quite some time. Uh, people continue to flock, uh, to the central coast. Uh, they can't travel out of state. A lot of them can't travel other areas, so they're continuing to come into the central coast area. Um, I'll give you an example. We, uh, we did a comparison to, to our closest, uh, agency, which is the, the Sloane County Sheriff's Office, who out of their La Sosa substation, they cover La Sosa, Cayucus and Cambria. Uh, and, and our agency, uh, runs on average, uh, about two hundred to three hundred calls for service a month more, uh, than that agency and all three of those communities combined. So, uh, we're extremely busy, uh, and with this influx of people, uh, used to, we used to see it kind of on a weekend basis, uh, now we're experiencing it every week, where we're just seeing this number of increased people. Uh, and with them come, uh, all kinds of calls for service from, from disturbing the peace and, you know, just traffic calls and, and other related calls as well. So, uh, that, we don't see any sign of that slowing down anytime soon.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, moving on to the next item, the parking management strategies. I just, in case the public has forgotten, we desperately need revenue. And I think, um, this, uh, parking study, even though we did one in two thousand and seven, uh, we're looking at it as a possible source of future revenue, so it's important. Uh, the questions I have about it are, uh, so we have an unassigned fund balance of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, just about. This appropriation, does it cover the whole scope, including, um, getting this through Coastal Commission? Or is this like an initial study? You know, I'm always kind of curious about consultant agreements and what we're actually getting, uh, for, for the dollars that we're paying for it. So maybe you can enlighten me on that?
Yeah, so this, uh, this study gets you, uh, a couple things. It gets you, uh, some data collection, it gets you data analysis, and then it gets you an expert in parking, uh, to tell you, you know, from, based on what they're pulling from the analysis, what a good, um, approach to parking management would be for your community, um, based on all the work they do throughout the state. So I think typically you, you would go from there to say, okay, we want to pursue paid parking. Um, there may be some follow-up work to, to develop the system, um, that being like, is it going to be parking meters? Is it going to be, uh, paid parking lots? Is it going to be online apps? So, you know, the like, um, and set up a, a parking office, if you will. So I think there's going to be further stuff down the road, but to get us, um, to the point where council can, and PWEB, and then council can say, we think this parking management strategy is a good idea and we'd like to move forward. Um, that would authorize us to move forward to the Coastal Commission. Uh, there may be a little bit of support they would need to provide us, but we would typically take that from there. We don't leave it up to our consultants to, to push forward something like this at the Coastal Commission. So, uh, but if there's support, the Coastal Commission level, then we would have further consultant work to set up a system. I hope that makes sense.
It does. And, uh, so it could conceivably, we could spend this money on this report, it goes to Coastal and they could shoot it down or modify it significantly or whatever.
Correct. I would expect, uh, a minimum, modify significantly.
That sounds about right. Uh, so the crux of this, typically, whatever you mentioned, paid parking, is business owners don't want it in front of their store, or maybe they do want it. How, how is, how is this consultant going to deal with that fundamental issue about paid parking in our town? We've never had it. Uh, it's a problem for my business, not a boon. Uh, how is this consultant different from anybody else? And how are they going to resolve that issue?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I think, um, it, it, I've had conversations, uh, when we did, uh, um, we looked at closing down one lane on the Embarcadero, um, parking became a very, yeah, parking became a very important topic, you know, believe it or not, with business owners. When we talked about losing parking spaces and, and it became clear that, uh, you know, um, staff use park, you know, park in some areas, maybe in lucrative spots, and they, they understand that, and they don't really know how to address that, other than, you know, saying, please don't do that. But they're, they have to worry about their business and not managing parking. Um, and it was very clear that parking is a premium down the waterfront, based on the conversations we had with fifteen or twenty, uh, business owners. So, um, they may not like it, but I also think they understand that there's economics at play and it helps drive decision-making about parking. If every parking spot is free, staff are going to park as close as they can to where they want to be. Tourists are going to park as close as they can. Owners of businesses may even do the same thing at their own expense. Um, so it, it's walking them through that. Of course, the analysis has to support it. If it doesn't support it, then you're not going anywhere with this conversation. But if it does, then it's an outreach piece. And we would fully expect to, to work at the chamber and, and, um, we have it in the, the consultant agreement to do several meetings with business owners. Um, and then ultimately PWEB and then council if it gets that far.
Well, okay, that's, that's the big question.
Yes.
Let's see. And then the wayfinding side, gosh, you know, the wayfinding side's been talked about for so long. And, uh, now that it's coming up, and, um, the, the SB ten ninety funds, which, you know, come from the Diablo Canyon, uh, closure, has a balance of five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in it. Can we use those for anything? Or what are, what are our limitations on how we use those funds?
Yes, uh, as, as, as Ms. Wiltay, um, explained, and she was part of the negotiation of the, the consortium of cities, uh, or coalition of cities, that is, um, that, that purpose was really to sort of prepare some respects for the, the loss of, um, economic vitality provided by the operation of Diablo and the job creation from that. Um, but there wasn't a lot of specificity short of, it needs to be, uh, economic development related. Um, I think it was intentionally open-ended in that way, but not meant to be sort of a backfilling of city, um, services. So they asked for, you know, annual reports. Um, the county is collecting, collected that information from all the cities and submitted to PG&E. Um, I imagine that would be reviewed by the Public Utilities Commission, and if there's some irregularities, it could be an issue for that city. So, um, that's why we're being very careful in just saying it's only for economic development purposes. Some other cities have used, I believe, used, they said built-in ninety money for wayfinding as well. Um, others have used it for, um, projects, uh, others are using it like we are to pay for economic development staff or contracts. So I think we're pretty much in line with what our partner agencies are doing.
Okay, so it, it's economic development in general. So it could be used possibly for infrastructure work at the Embarcadero or something like that?
It could, I think, if you could make the argument that that's, uh, whatever that improvement is, it has a direct linkage. Um, you know, for instance, uh, not exactly the same, but Pismo, you know, did upgrades to, uh, their main thoroughfare, uh, using T-Bid funds, and they made the argument to their hoteliers that that was going to spur, oh, you know, help spur overnight stays in, in their hotels by sprucing up the location. So, uh, absolutely could be utilized in that respect, um, that being said, it built to ninety. Um, one thing to note is that, uh, as you mentioned, it has been talked about a lot. There has been discussions with the four, um, business districts. There seems to be a lot of support, um, from the businesses that we move forward because our signage is so bad and antiquated and unreadable in some locations and highlights things like our Coast Guard Office. Uh, you know, maybe it made sense then, no, I'm sorry, Eric, say the Harbor Office. Um, but, uh, so, you know, I think our business community does want to see this move forward, but your point is, is, is on, is, is right, that it could be used for, for projects that have an economic development relation.
Okay. And then my other question about SB ten ninety has to do with the small business grants. So from the five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, and it states in here that we use twenty-nine thousand, it will allow us to use fifty thousand in the future. What's-
Yeah, so let me explain that. Uh, so council authorized a hundred thousand dollars, um, several meetings ago to launch this grant program. Uh, we received, uh, the first round of applications in your granting, uh, let's see, um, eighty-four thousand dollars in grants. Uh, we, we, uh, will be announcing that, um, the council meeting tonight and then the press release tomorrow. Um, and we believe that there's, with that sixteen thousand dollars remaining from the original hundred thousand, if you add thirty-four, you get fifty thousand. It's a nice round number, especially in light of the new order from the governor and some businesses having to shutter or, um, significantly, uh, curtail their activities, that this may help a couple businesses stay open or survive, uh, the surge. So that, that's why the fifty thousand dollars is, is thrown out, but in reality, the, the total program would be, um, a hundred, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, questions please?
Yep, I had to unmute.
You're there.
Um, I'm here, I'm here. Uh, I have, most of my questions were answered. Um, I'm glad to hear that we'll get something back hopefully mid-year about the harbor fund. And I had a question about the police officer vacancy, so that's important for people to know. I think a lot of people voted for, uh, the new sales tax because they had the understanding that it would be used to fund safety services. So I'm glad to know that that's, uh, the plan for that funding, if we're able to fund the, uh, new, or the existing vacancy anyway. But then one thing I was wondering if you could talk about just briefly, is I know that paid parking money is restricted, but what are some of the things surrounding cities have used their paid parking money for?
Well, Katie can actually lighten us a little bit on that. Um, but, you know, in talking with Pismo and the work I did in Santa Cruz on our parking fund there, uh, their fund, parking fund there, sorry, um, you, you, you build up revenues over time. It allows you to do more things with it, but the, the main purpose in a lot of respects is to pay for itself, to pay for the staffing, pay for the infrastructure. Of course, parking technology is rapidly, uh, improving over time and, and, and moving towards a touchless, uh, uh, system in some respects because of COVID. So that, those costs could be coming down, but ultimately it's supposed to pay for itself. And then over time, if parking needs grow, you can pay for parking lots or decks in that case. And, and I think the argument can be made that it can help support, uh, adjacent infrastructure, whether it's sidewalks that connect to or the streets that connect to, or, um, adjacent parks or parklets, you know, those kind of things. I, I think the argument can be made that there's a nexus. Um, but if you start pulling from the revenue and paying for police officers that have nothing to do with the, the parking system itself, you could run into trouble legally. So that's, that's sort of my basis of understanding, and Katie, um, may have additional insights on that, but it's a good question.
Yeah, I'll just add that I've seen, um, cities do it differently, um, in the different places where I've worked. Um, some have a setup for a parking fund and they are more restrictive. Others have had the parking expenses associated with installing the infrastructure and, um, doing everything that has created the opportunity to create the parking, um, infrastructure through the general fund anyways. And so they've kept it in the general fund. And so there are, there are no restrictions basically for where you put the, those dollars. And so it depends on, in my experience, based on, uh, four different cities, three of which have a robust parking program, that it just depends on how it gets set up from the outset. And so, um, so I would suggest to you that, um, from that experience, it would be important to have some input from the consultants, I would guess, um, in, in terms of what are best management practices, in terms of how to set that up and making sure that we're talking to that, um, person who does this across the state. Cause I, granted, I have some experience, but, and Scott has experience, and I'm sure there are other people on staff who have experience, but it would be valuable to have somebody else's insights into what's the best way to structure it.
And I, in a way, I sort of, I swear, the way I sort of look at it is that, that you're paying for, you're paying a, a fee basically for a service, you know, but if you're, that payment is going to pay for something unrelated to your service, that you sort of could run into prop-to-18 issues. I, and that's sort of my understanding, but again, it's, it, it, it's all about a risk assessment and, yeah.
Right.
And Mr. Newheim was surprised his, him and his books haven't popped up, but-
Yeah.
I would imagine he's thinking about that too, but maybe he's on a snack break.
And I, and I've had, heard the argument be made until Chris comes in, um, that you're actually renting the dirt on which the parking space sits. And so it's no different than a lease, right? So you're just paying a dollar an hour or whatever you're paying an hour to be able to lease that or rent that space. So that's why it's different, at least in the places where I've been, than the fee-for-service model where you can't, um, make more than it costs to, um, provide that service. So it sounds like we're going to have a robust conversation among staff members even before we get much further.
Definitely.
Like I said, I'm just thinking as we frame this, or, you know, what are the questions we should be asking, um, so that if we're thinking about it in terms of revenue generation, and it's come to council a number of times, when we talk about budget as one option of revenue generation, that, um, we're pretty clear about what our goals are and how we can get, you know, how we can get to those goals. And I think, um, I know, speaking for myself, you know, one of the questions I have is, is this going to help us beyond just, you know, paying to pay for parking? Like what, you know, what else can we do? And, and how do we get to that place? Um, and I think it's important for our public to know as well, you know, what are the benefits that could come from this besides people, you know, not parking in that couple space, few spaces for a certain amount of time?
Right. And I, and I think that, um, depending on the consultant you talk to, I think some of their more on the advanced side would argue that, uh, parking management increases economic vitality through turnover. Um, and the very business owner who's afraid that if there's a parking meter in front of their business actually stands to benefit from that, because the high, the, the consumer that's coming to buy something in their shop is more likely to park there and leave. Um, and it o- it opens it up another opportunity for the next consumer to do that, where if, if somebody's parked in that space for eight hours, that's a loss to that business potentially. So, um, even if you weren't spinning off revenue for other uses, you still have an economic development argument to be made. Um, and I think, you, you know, it all, largely, this depends on how much revenue you can generate, you know, will, will dictate what more you can do. So all these things would have to be discussed, to Councilmember Heller's point, through further analysis, I would say.
Councilmember Addis, if I can just weigh in briefly, on the issue of what the, uh, revenue is generated by, uh, any activity that the city is charging, um, a fee or an amount for, uh, that activity has to be actually examined to see whether it is, um, uh, being charged to offset city costs, or whether or not it's just simply somebody using a city service that we don't have to necessarily provide. Uh, so to break it down to brass tacks, um, as, um, the interim finance director pointed out, if it's concluded that the parking spots that are being charged for use, if that is just clearly city property that, you know, we can use as we see fit, and we can charge a fee for it, and that's fine. It'd be the equivalent of, you know, the city can rent out, you know, city property throughout the city and charge a rental fee, and, and that, that fee is just the city's essentially realizing revenue to go to the general fund. On the flip side, if somebody comes to the city and says, hey, I'd like to get a building permit, or, you know, I'd like to get a conditional use permit or something to that effect, you know, we can charge them for the cost of processing it, but that isn't really a city asset, if you will, that we're renting to somebody. So I would echo what the interim finance director liked to mention. And of course, you know, we'd want to make sure the analysis is 100% once we go down that path. But those are my general thoughts on what the money could be used for.
I think for the sake of time, that's all my questions. I'll just voice support for money from the cannabis retailer to go, you know, to shoring up our reserve funds. I think that's important, and I feel supportive of our other, the other proposals here, especially knowing that, as Councilmember McPherson said, these are monies that are really allotted for very specific things. Most of, most of the funding that's being asked for is allotted for very specific things, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of questions because of the time. On the delinquent water accounts, I would like to make it very clear to everyone that nobody's water is going to be turned off.
Absolutely.
Okay. And do, you described for me a process of helping people to bring their accounts current. Do we have experience at present of following that process? You said also that because of personnel shortage, we're, we're a little behind.
Yes, Councilmember, thank you very much for asking. We do have experience. We've actually, since April or March 24th, we've initiated, it looks like, a total of 23 payment plans. And of those 23, we have quite a number that are paid in full. Six, seven. So there's, there's quite a number, at least seven of them that are paid in full. And so it feels very collaborative from how it's been described to me in terms of trying to work with people and making sure that they find a way to navigate the challenges associated with making choices in their lives about which bills they're going to pay.
Sure. And with city help.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Thank you for that. And then the wayfinding signs project, I think I heard you say that part of the project will be removal of old signs that have popped up over the years. Is that correct?
Yes, the other sign, directional signage would be removed. Scott, through staff and interns have done the initial analysis of those and then the placement analysis as well, but going, going to the next step with Public Works to solidify the location of new signage. And then we should go out to RFP for fabrication and installation. But we fully expect it to help declutter through this process. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, that's one of the ultimate goals of this as well, is creating better signage.
No, that's correct. We went out and through a GIS application, went out and identified the location of all of the, all of the existing signage that's out there. So we know where it's at, and we can find it. And so we'll be able to work with our Public Works folks to have those, that signage removed at the appropriate time.
Okay, so we will, in the end, have a single design for all of our wayfinding signs throughout the city?
Yes, that is the idea.
And then the last thing, it's, it's just a math question, Scott. The, you have $84,000, you've expended $84,000, you have $16,000 left for the small business loans. You want an additional 29,000 to bring it up to 50,000. And that doesn't match.
Yeah, and I was supposed to flag that in my presentation. My apologies. I, I put it in there at 34, but I didn't flag it. We had one grant application that made it through the original timeline, but we didn't catch it, and it was brought to our attention. So we reviewed it, and we'll be also giving them a grant. So that number went up 5,000. So we went from 79 to 84, 84,000. So that means we're 16,000 to 100, and 34 plus 16, it gets us 50. So we had 29,000 in the staff report, but that didn't account for this additional five that we just granted. Sorry about all that. It's very confusing.
So what is it you're really asking for?
We are asking for $34,000, and that will get us to 50 left over.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and I want to be clear that we were able to fund every single application that was made during this first round. Is that correct?
Correct. And we had a panel review. Not everybody got all the money they requested. There was, you know, some rigor placed on that, criteria, et cetera. And, and, and yes, everybody's receiving money. Not everybody's receiving everything they asked for, but everybody's been very, the emails we've sent out have been very grateful. And one thing I would throw out, I know was in the report, I did have at least one nonprofit ask, the original process, if nonprofits would be included as a small business. And I said, no, that wasn't part of the discussion with council, but certainly we could be something we could extend into this next round if, if council is so accommodating. That's up to council entirely.
Okay. And then just finally, I want to thank Katie for very comprehensive answers to the long list of questions that I sent to her previously. And that's all that I have. Mr. Mayor, ready to go.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Let me reiterate my thanks to staff for a great overview and a comprehensive presentation and report. I know that this year's budget is very unusual. It's a very conservative budget. However, a majority of it is, is really balanced based upon significant depletion of the general fund emergency reserve, which continues to concern me. And Councilmember Addis highlighted that as well greatly. We are depleting. If we, if we realize our plan as, as per this budget, we will deplete our general fund emergency reserve by 60, almost 63%, leaving very little for, quote, "the number of uncertainties," many number of uncertainties that have been listed by staff in this report, and other additional uncertainties such as calpers that are plaguing us and many cities, or all cities across the state, maybe even the country, at, at this time. I do believe, however, that the recommendations by staff should be supported because the sources of funds are not, for the most part, coming out of the general fund, but are coming from other appropriate funds that will be drawn down upon. And I believe there's good rationale for the projects. And so with that, I will move that we receive the fiscal year 2021 first quarter budget performance and status report, and authorize budget adjustments as recommended in the attached first quarter budget performance report, and adopt resolution number 101-20, authorizing staff to proceed with the first quarter of budget adjustments with the amendment to add item seven to exhibit A, allocating $34,000 from SB 1090 funds available in the Economic Development Fund for small business grants to Morro Bay businesses, and predicated on the fact that the CPR reductions are one-time and not compounded as per Mr. Endersby's explanation. And three, allocation of $29,000 from California Senate Bill Number 1090 funds available in the Economic Development Fund for small business grants to Morro Bay businesses.
Mayor, if I could, the last, item three, item three is
Oh, item three is the amendment. Never mind. This regard, item three. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
My, my bad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading with the amendment on the resolution, seconded by Councilmember Addis, and I'll entertain any further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, do you, I know the question came late, but do you want to ask, pull the council as far as use of the 50,000 for nonprofits as part of the, the small business, or leave it to businesses only?
I'll look for head nods. I'm, I see, can I see everybody?
I would like that.
Yeah, okay. Put your video on, or let me see your face. Is that
I had just one.
Go ahead.
I had a question about also if, if we would get any kind of report back about the effectiveness of the program, or just if anything would be coming back to council.
Yes, requirement, and when this was brought forward, is that there would be reporting back by the end of the fiscal year, or sorry, end of the calendar year. And we've already got some responses from those that are going to receive it. You know, here's how I, I've already spent the money basically in reimbursing myself, whether it's rent, a lot of people, PPE expenses and, and other, other things that they've already incurred. And this is to help, help them battle debt in a lot of respects. But yeah, we expect to have a, a full report we can present to, to council, and also an understanding, a number of jobs saved and businesses that are allowed to continue to operate that otherwise wouldn't be able to.
Thank you. Do I have head nods for nonprofit considerations?
So, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about including the nonprofits and businesses in, in terms of using this?
Right, into the program, yes, yeah. I'm seeing head nods. I'm looking for heads.
No, I'm not ready to support that at this time. I need to hear more information before I want to make, make that decision. I, I feel kind of ambushed by bringing that up at this point.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay. And Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, I'm a no, just because I think we really need to focus on our businesses. And the nonprofits, obviously extremely important, but our businesses are what are going to take us out of this pandemic and a strong position, so.
Thank you. And Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I nodded my head, but I think that's sound logic that we should certainly hear more before you would make a decision like that.
And I would agree with that, and I would be open to entertaining considerations for nonprofits being brought back at another meeting to discern where the sources of funds might be for that. So it looks like we have a majority on that. So the motion stands with the existing second. Any further discussion?
I, I would like to, I'm sorry.
Yes. Go ahead.
Who has the floor? I don't want to interrupt.
I'm looking at Councilmember Addis came up first, so.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah.
Oh, I just, on the nonprofits, I'm fine with it to come back. I would advocate to understand the number of people that the nonprofits employ. While the businesses might provide a tax base, the nonprofits, nonprofits provide a service often to Morro Bay, and part of the service they give us is employing people who live in Morro Bay or live, you know, close to here and are going to be shopping here. So I would like to see that as a piece when that comes back.
Thank you. Great point. And Councilmember Heller, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a comment about, I have number six, the wayfinding signs. When I look at that, I may be the only one that feels this way, but when I look at that economic development money from the closure of Diablo Canyon, at $594,000, I think, boy, that's, that's really a great opportunity for us to do something special here in Morro Bay. Wayfinding signage is important, but we're looking at allocating 25% of that, almost $600,000 for signs. When I, when I keep thinking about what's the best thing we can do for our economy, I think we need to widen the Embarcadero sidewalk so that people can walk along there and not end up in the street. And I personally would rather see, see that money go towards something like that. I don't think people have a hard time finding places in Morro Bay. Everyone knows where The Rock is. Everyone knows where the Embarcadero is, Morro Bay Boulevard. It's not a huge town. I'm hoping that people will continue to come here in the volume that they have, but I really think we need to, rather than putting up signs, new signs, we need to spend money on, on infrastructure. And I will volunteer to take down all the signs that you want removed. I will do that, no charge to the city. So hopefully I can get some support.
Thank you. I, I will just remind you that the chamber, through its GAC, Government Affairs Committee, did a fairly extensive analysis and has recommended a number of times that, from an economic development standpoint, wayfinding has significant impact for cities. I, I do agree, and I will stand with my motion, if, and I see my second head nodding, that this is important from an economic development standpoint, and would be an appropriate allocation of the funds. So I'll, I'll stick with that. Looks like my second is sticking with that as well.
Yeah, and I would just add that it has been a priority for years, and we've talked about it, talked about it, and talked about it. And now there is money there, and it's, it's, we need to get it done. And I've seen what a difference it can make in a city like San Luis Obispo to have wayfinding signs, and, and how it affects tourists. And I might add that one of my initial experiences here was, it was a foggy day, but somebody came up to me and I was standing maybe 100 yards from The Rock, and they said, I hear you have a rock here. Where is it?
Thank you for that. Okay. Unless there are any other comments, I'll call for the question. Madam Chair.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you all so very much. That ends the special meeting. We will see you for the next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council, which will be held this evening at 5:30 PM via Zoom. See you all in about 20 minutes. Thank you again, staff, for your excellent work and your great presentations. Thank you.